I cannot stand it, goddammit, from another planet, goddammit. And I never held for this shit but dealt with it. Don't look at me so desperate. Never would imagine where I've gone and how it happened once again. I must be part of my friends. I'm not a and don't tell me. I heard yummy not a toy, don't tell me. Alright, don't have a function, baby. Once again with my friends go crazy. Okay, 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 okay. Once again with my friends go crazy. Okay, 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 okay. Once again with my friends go crazy. Blackout to tuck in, they wanna see the life I live. Love magic again, we bring it down with all my friends. Hate if you're mad, came through the backdoor, we've burned it up. Might come around, you're being on the strap. Leave them as ground, can't make a snap. Ocean with my lord, and away we go. Just so you know, I'm not alone no more. Contemplate this throne, don't let me go, I'll get on my phone. Let me get one chance and you won't regret this. They don't understand my prestige aesthetic. I'm not a and don't tell me. I heard yummy not a toy, don't tell me. Alright, don't have a function, baby. Once again with my friends go crazy. Okay, 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 okay. Once again with my friends go crazy. Okay, 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 okay. Once again with my friends go crazy. Blackout to tuck in, they wanna see the life I live. Love magic again, we bring it down with all my friends. Hate if you're mad, came through the backdoor, we've burned it up. Might come around, you're being on the strap. Leave them as ground, can't make a snap. Ocean with my lord, and away we go. Just so you know, I'm not alone no more. Contemplate this throne, don't let me go, I'll get on my phone. Let me get one chance and you won't regret this. They don't understand my prestige aesthetic.
Guess what we do? What was that? Tria Cosmic Garden on twitch.tv? Drawn by Bree Love Mura on twitch.tv. Hi, Faf. Yes. It's Tria time. It's a little Tria time. I'm drawing Tria's hands once again. Is Tria time? Would this be in front or behind that? I think it would be in front of it still. So if I like, put this like here instead. Holy, uh... Alright, now it's called me and my best friend Liquify Tool cuz I'm gonna, gonna change some stuff. Me and my bestie. Gonna make, keep see finger a little bit smaller. A little bit smaller. Here we go. Oh my god. You summoned Tria. Okay. As for the controller, I don't know how to draw controllers really, so I'mma do... I'mma try and follow whatever I sketched here. I don't really know what I did. I make fool myself on Twitter, BRB. Good? Choice, question mark? Good luck, have fun. Let me start naming these, actually. I have to Google what a Switch Pro controller looks like. Hold on. Have to look it up. Slinky wants in my room. I lived. It's Portfolio Day and I have nothing new to share, so I'm scrambling to make a post. I'm never ready for Portfolio Day. Never. I guess I could just post my reel again that I have pinned to my profile. But I am never ready for Portfolio Day. You have all my friends over a month warning and I still forgot about it. Me! Portfolio Day and all I create is gay little doodles. Portfolio Day and I'd be like, VTuber? I probably should make a new reel too. That has more live 2D models in it now. I can post more live 2D model. I see you, Slinky. Why are you looking at me like that? He turned away. Good morning. Look at the lovely lines. Hi, Proper. So many kids. Breed. How do you say that? Bridred? Bri- I can't put like, the E sound with it. Slinky, stop! Thank you. Oh, I need to update my website. I forgot. Stopped streaming to update my card real quick. I completely forgot to change them last night to say, "closed." Good morning, Saiyan. The one thing about making my website and card like this is that it do- it do be taking a second to load. Hi, I'm Ruin Chat. Hello, Shuga. Welcome in. Hello, Light. Sniffing. Oh, you're sniffing? Bro, just like that for free? Fifty-four K re points. Congrat. Congrat. Out here trying to be an artist. I had, I queued some Tumblr posts today, tiki. Stay sniffing. Yes. Oh, right. The whole reason I stopped was to Google what a Switch Pro controller looks like. Images. Oh god, I have to post to Tumblr. I forgor. I also forgor, like very regularly. Oh my god, a pink one! That's not what I need. Um... Wow, a Switch Pro controller from the back. Perfect. Slinky, what are you doing right now? I don't know what he's doing. I don't know if I'll need this image again, but I'm gonna put it in, in the file, so I don't have to find it again. That is a large Switch Pro controll- That is a large controller. I just wanted it for reference. Please. Just in case I need it again. I don't wanna look it up again. Beats tree over the head with a large Switch Pro controller. I just take the Switch Pro controller and I just put it there and I don't like do anything else to it. I just paste it there. Tria gets a PNG. Slinky Binky, what you doing, baby boy? Ooh, I scratched his butt. I'm gonna touch your nose. Boop. Thank you. Okay, there we go. It's for big games. Zucci! Astrolo! Okay, now we got that. Uh, I was naming layers. Game. There we go. Until it cuz I'm gonna be a DJ and gamer. You chose to be a gamer? Good for you! Hi, Tenji. Welcome in. So we need this to be right here. Game controller. Oh, instead of game, I typed gay. Like the G-A-E spelling of gay. I worked forever yesterday. Oh my god, yeah, gamer. There you go. Slinky? What are you doing? DM you on the bird app to ask what time did your slots close cuz I hope I didn't miss the deadline. They are closed! I closed them last night as soon as I fell asleep. Like, I turned off my computer and then I realized I didn't close them, so I was like, "Siddy, can you close my Google Forms for me?" And then she did. They are closed. Waitlist's still open, but Forms are closed. I submitted it last night. Okay, shouldn't be in there then. I gotta look through them all. Um, there's too many. There's way more than I thought there would be. There is twenty-five on the chibi and thirty-two on the standard. That's too many. Gonna be busy. Oh, I'm not taking all of them. No. No, it just means I have to pick through them. That'd be kinda crazy. Your work is lovely. The people want it. This is what happens when you don't open commissions for months, I guess. People are like, "Oh no, what if this the last time she opens commissions?" And I'm like, "Ooh." That looks like a good line. Bringing their ref offerings to the British Shrine, hoping to get picked. Thank you. Thank you for offering up your refs. Thank you, thank you. Looky, no! What are you doing? Please do not pull on my cords. Why are you suddenly interested in my cords? You were not interested in my cords before. What changed? I'm about to bonk him. What are you doing? What are you doing? Boop, boop, boo-boo, boop, boop. Savior Canvas, thank you. He said these are mine now. No! Oh my god. So it's like, it's like a, a round kinda edge over here. And then a flat middle. And then there's like, panel here. And the buttons are these sides. I might draw the buttons separately. Just in case. I don't think I really need to, but just in case. And then there's a little plug here. There's a little plug here. I hope that's a USB-C. And then a button here. Button here. It looks like a face. Looks like a guy. Slinky! What are you doing? He wants to be irritating. What are you doing down there? I'm letting him sniff the tablet pen. Is this what you want? He's rubbing his face on the tablet pen. Okay. Glad you like it. And then I... Go over here. What kinda shape? Oh my god, Snurf. Oh my god, point Snurf. Snurf's birthday is tomorrow. It's Snurf Day tomorrow. It's Snurf Day tomorrow. And then I made my Portfolio Day post. Good job! Slinky sends his power in it. Oh my god. Snurf the Thundercats character? There's a Thundercats character named Snarf? I didn't know that. Thank you for the hydrate. Happy birthday, Snarf! Tomorrow. Sungi showed us in chat. That's what that was? Astro, you know Sungi just be sending images and not explaining, so I was just like, "Ah, a Sungi image that he doesn't explain." Hi, Swervie. Welcome in. I blame Jarm for all this Snarf bullshit. That's your name now. You don't have an option. There's the Snarf and He-Man. Oh! Oh my god, Slinky! My guy! Hold on. Slinky has knocked something over. Give me a second. Uh-huh. I think he's done doing whatever. So Slinky knocked over his feeder, which knocked over my air filter. And then, uh, when I put the air filter and I set everything back up, the air filter started making a weird sound, so I turned it off for now. I don't know what happened to it. It's just good. Just lift it off for now. I'll figure it out later. Slinky waking up and choosing violence. He did. He really did. I don't even know why. I don't even know what he's trying to accomplish. Anyway, hi. My cat was still there. She disappeared. Oh no. Off to cause mischief. Disrespect your surroundings. He's being so mean to me. I'm like, "Why? Why did you do this to me?" Please. That's like my cat ten minutes ago. No! Back to trying to draw a Switch Pro controller. I need to draw the buttons. Yeah, hold on. Feel like it might be easier to go from this side. So it's like an angle up. Straight across from here. And this also an angle up and straight across. Angle up and like this way. Like that. This just goes down. Maybe bring this in a little? And just go along this line again. Okay. Morning, Neko Wolf. Hello. Hello, I hope you people are doing well. Hello! Welcome in. I was thinking about finishing setting up Treat Stream. I started setting it up and then I just stopped. Okay, what else does a Switch Pro controller have? It has the little lines on this side. Has like this, this kind of shape? That's actually like pretty close. Yeah, it's like back heading a shape. And then there's like a design here, like Nintendo logo, but I don't feel too obligated to do all that. We'll just draw like, like the oval, that's supposed to be the Nintendo logo. Oh, look, you're right, it's really cool, thank you! Okay. Rehoped, FaF, PersoTo5 or Tomb Raider? Persona? Persona? Hello! Aluka, welcome in, sorry, hello! I have more questions while you draw about what we were talking about yesterday. Well, okay, have more questions, let's go. The way my brain did not want to make a sentence, that was so hard. Okay, I think I got like most of the stuff. Like, there's not that much on the back of a Switch Pro controller, we can add little stickers and shit later, I guess. Still earlier, your brain is waking up, so true. Normal is communicating through vague sounds, bro, I'm about to start talking like an Animal Crossing character. It's all fun and games till I open the stream and then I start being like... So is it better to go to the same artist for all your comms? Uh, no, that's like personal preference. Entirely personal preference. You can go to multiple artists if you want, it really is just dependent on what styles of art you like. You'll be like, ooh, this person's art kinda, kinda my vibe, bro. Oh, I kinda jive with this, bro, can I, do you have commissions open? That's usually how it goes. Brilla Murro is fluent in Animal Crossing, yes! Must start speaking Simlish, uh-oh. Uh-oh. I speak Animal Crossing character to my friends, they have mixed feelings, oh my god. Just ask Jar, yeah, Jar be commissioning 45,000 artists at the same time all the time. Personally, I'd want someone, you can actually draw Afrocentric hair, which is why I like your style so much. Yeah, it's just literally find an artist you like and that, and the artist can do the things that you would like them to do. That was not a good sentence, it's okay, you know what I mean? You know what I mean, if you need an artist that can draw cars, you can be like, hey, can you draw cars too? You could ask those things. Okay. I don't have money for Broken Chair, I'mma smack 'em. I think I sent him, I sent him the chair that I have, which I got from Amazon, it's like 200 something dollars, it's like a mesh office chair type thing, I really like it. I keep sending this chair to people, cuz I really like it, Keishen has this chair too. I really like this chair. Mesh chairs are so nice. Let me find the Amazon listing again, I keep sending this chair to people. Office chairs are superior to gaming chairs, they really are. They really are though, like, bro, I love this mesh chair. Oh yeah, baby, how much is it now? Cuz it keeps going up. Oh shit! It's 169 now? Bro, the price of this chair keeps going up and down and up and down. Anyway, here's the chair that I keep pushing to people. Bye, I'm still at work, bye, Mew! I would get extra lumber support pillow things for every chair I get, cuz so few come with them anymore. They specifically make chairs to slouch, and nowadays, true. I feel like the lumber support on this could be a little better? But like... I'm chilling with this chair. I'm gonna fuck around and buy that this weekend. Here we go! I like this chair, like, it's a pretty good chair so far, as far as I've had it. We, I've had this chair since like July of last year, I think? I don't know, it's holding up pretty good! And I do be sitting in it every single day. Are the armrests cushy or hard? They're pretty hard. They're pretty hard, if that's a thing you're concerned about, yeah. I'd say they're pretty hard. My mesh chair on its last legs, ooh! Ooh, chair, I like this chair! I like my chair, I like the chair I have, it is my tendons or sensitive nerds with no friends, no! Be like that sometimes, I guess. Okay. Okay, I need to put back the sleeves on these arms, where are they? Is it you? No. Is it you? Yes, okay. And get mad without soft armrests, that's the most common issue I find with mesh chairs, that's understandable. I get it, I get it, yeah. I feel like if you can't find a mesh chair that has the soft armrest, you could get like those uh, things that you can put on top of it, but still, that's like annoying, that you would have to buy a separate thing. Like, draw a chair that de-eated itself and you're really not about. Draw a chair that just fell apart. And tucked into my chair, I've been here. What I actually need is, like, like a monitor stand type thing. My tablet, I have a stand for my tablet, but it still sits too low on my desk, so I want to like put something under it so that it can be a little bit taller. I need to stack some stuff underneath it. Take care if you're back, you don't wanna end up like me with random lower back pains. So I just got something, see what he bought for his desk, he did? I did not know that. I have to go stream open, he out here art streaming, bro! He out here art streaming, oh my god, art streamer! Oops. Uh, I need this. This layer, yes. Yeah, he said he got it from Ikea, I think he said that yesterday, uh, okay. I can ask him later. Look at Trio's really long sleeves. Hi, Sugary! It's been so long since I've done like normal commissions that I'm afraid that I'm going to take these commissions and then forget how to draw. I'm gonna take the commissions and be like, damn, how do I draw lines that aren't like overlapping anymore? I drew one thing yesterday, just in case. Just in case, I need to remember. Passio here shouting, people, audience! Hi, Mura, hello, Kyo! Okay, here's the front of the sleeve, and then we need the back of the sleeve. There we go! Oh, I need those thumbs too. My food duties are done, time to eat, oh hell yeah! Thank you for the hydrate, my cat can never decide which hand she wants me to pet her with. What Slinky will do is he'll just like, keep walking around you, like, he won't stop and stand still. I'm so tired. I'm surprised I'm awake this early today? Same, good morning! I was awake far too early. Hey, I woke up at 6am today, Teehee! Teehee shy fingers. Aggressively nudge your hand with her nose on both of your hands for 20, 30 minutes till she's happy. Let her do what she wants, is what she deserves. Where is the end of this line? Oh my god. Okay. Now I just need these charms again, which I am once again going to copy and paste. I wonder if I should have waited to copy paste them until I rendered them? I could just render them individually right now, for no real reason. Well, nah. Nah, it's fine. It's the charm. Duplicate. And let's put this up here. Cuz I just remembered, I can only move one layer at a time with that move tool. Oops. Oh, oh, whoa! You're Jubias like the heck? Cuz if I stopped and colored this now, then I would have like six layers to move instead of just three. And I'm like, eh, it's just little balls, I can color those. Those little orbs. Oh, wrong layer. This move tool is too strong! Oh? Why is this one not here? It is there. Is it because of the slot? Yeah. There we are. Now I just need one more of those eventually. I guess I could fill these right now. Where's my switches? I don't even know if I actually need the swatches, cuz these colors I already have on the other arms. Let's see. Those are the charms, I'm not gonna mess with those. The controller has this and the buttons, we have the gradient coloring on it. I'm gonna just yoink this color and like this color for now. I'll just leave it that. Invert. Like that, like that. And then we'll make the buttons purple. Sticking! For now. Oh, I wanted to draw the thumbs behind those. Which were like here. And then look at the sketch. Other part of hand. Abrias live, that me. Hi, Eden. That's a lot of things. Oh, okay. I see how it is. Starts crying. Hello, red pandas. Welcome in. Okay. Now I did not forget the from this time. Ooh, but I'm gonna need to put the, what's it called? The fishnet thing on here? We'll put it up like here. There's a care package. Thank you! Hip pets, drink for the bunks. I cannot believe this. Hi, Moon! Welcome in! We gotta kiss you for Traya. I've been thinking about how I wanna do the face on my next model. Never mind. I'm not gonna talk about this because I'm deep red. Never mind. I no longer start telling you about it. So I have to work. So congrats, Bri. You've officially become background stream. I am the second monitor content. I am the second monitor content. I am the second monitor content. It's me. Stares at you. It looks so funny. Wait. Bro, you can see like all the part separation. Bro, I'm so crispy. You can't see how, it like doesn't translate to stream. You can't, the crisp does not translate to stream. It's so sad. It's so crunchy. Here, hold on. Like you cannot see how crunchy it actually is. Look at this. Look at this. Look how crunchy it is. Like what's going on? Crunchy kissing. Oh my god. Okay, anyway. I was getting distracted. Need one snack. I am uncrunchy. Second monitor content. Thank you. Thank you. I should just make that my, my channel trailer. Just that clip by itself. I am the second monitor content. Now fried baloney Bree, that was me. That was me. One of my many forms. I don't have his fucking channel trailer still. I should do that. I should just make that the channel trailer. Do nothing else. I haven't looked through my Twitch clips in a really long time. I do be forgetting that sometimes people make things in there. Alright, time to fill these layers. Ooh, you know something I can try on Traya's model? That I've never done successfully? It's the, it's, how do I explain? It's the like 3D boob turn? It's like it's like when you, when you have boob. Boob, right? But then when you turn like this way and they become like this? It's like, so you have the center line that like goes with it? I think I understand how to do it now. I think I kind of get it. But yeah, that's a reason to draw individual boobies if you wanna do that. Those nose, like the nosewear are a bit different. It's a bit different. Send Bob. Okay, we'll put this back. Um, 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 um. Man boobies from going to the gym. You could apply the same thing there actually. Yeah, it would do the same thing. As long as the boobs are drawn separately. Um, I'm gonna select here just in case. Oh, I select, that's the wrong thing. Okay, well, I'll take that too. Oh, it didn't even select at all. There's like a gap. There's like a really big gap. I just didn't finish drawing this. That's why I don't like to select the inside of the shape, because you get these corners, bro. Dimension of boobas. Booba! Mom, can I have more jiggle physics? Et cetera, et cetera. Okay, so there's the game arm, but we're still not done. There's the game arm. There's one other arm that we need. Let me go in here. Um. Oh, there's two other arms. That's right. I forgot we added that one. I forgot we added this set. Every time I think we're done with the arms, there's more arms that I forgot about. This one is lined with the base arms though. It's lined with these ones. And then after this, it should just be the last one. The lurk. And the coolest streamer's in your chat, Mur. I swear to god, I love being here. Welcome! Yeah! Thank you for the lurk. I'm sitting here thinking. I have this flipped right now, don't I? Yeah, I'm sitting here thinking that Traya, whatever next outfit you want on this model, make sure it doesn't have sleeves. Don't give it sleeves! Don't, don't put sleeves on it. Don't, don't put sleeves on it. That's so many more arms. Okay, um, I think I can just... Goodbye, Kiri. Give me no more sleeves. I'm banning the sleeve now. It depends. Maybe like maybe sleeves are okay, but like don't give it another pair of gloves maybe. Like don't change these gloves. No sleeves at all would be easiest, but if it has sleeves, maybe don't give it gloves. Cause that's like a lot of redrawing. That's a lot to draw over. And mostly joking. You could do whatever you want. Just know there will be a price. Okay, so these arms are also in front of the body, so we're gonna put those in the same area. No capes moment. Oh my god. Okay, I need to switch out. I have those arms visible already. I'm here. Where are these arms? Wait. Oh, okay. I'm gonna hide these entirely for now. And then I just need the upper sleeve gone. There we go. No sleeves for a second. Okay. Oh, Slinky, you wanna leave my room after causing so much destruction? I'm not surprised. Did I make a command? Did I make? I don't wanna open and check. Did I make a command for this? I don't think I did. Yet. Yeah, I didn't think I did. Okay, cool. I was like, I'm pretty sure I didn't, because I didn't finish setting it up. Hi, Boo Boo! Alright, on to another arm. Ooh, I get no symmetry roller for these ones. No symmetry roller. Oops, I just put a backslash in here on accident. My bad. Design cute. This is Traya. I put this here, but like also it's not helpful the way I put that there. Wait. I need that. Lower arm. Be gone. There we go. Boo Boo Egg. That's the problem I have so far. I'm still trying to think of how I want my design to look. You just put the things you like in it. At least that's what I did for me. Take your time. There is no rush. It's easier for you, because you can draw it out. I can't draw. You, there's like so many things you can do character design wise when you can't draw. Literally you go open any type of character creator. You can open a pick crew. And go fucking open the Sims if you really want to. I don't fucking know. Um. You can go look up outfit references, make a mood board of shit that you like. Et cetera, et cetera. I use IMVU. That's also true. You can literally use IMVU if you really wanted to. That's a mood board, OMG. Literally just a collection of images that you think are the vibe. That you think are the vibe, you know? You're like, this is the vibe. IMVU still exists. I kinda forgot about it. Why are we doing that brush? No, no, no. It's in VR chat, just virtual IMVU. VR chat is like so much harder to make stuff in though. Cause then you have to know how to do the blender knowledge to make the bones and shit. That makes it harder. Have the blender knowledge to like Frankenstein parts together. That's too hard. I be watching Sungy do that sometimes. I'm like, what is going on? I don't wanna break up these fingers. I think I might do it the same way I did on the game controller where I just like make the fingers have Uh... The little thing at the end, so that I don't have to actually do the fishnet on it. We stealing bones again? Bone stealing? Do you want your tuber bone-in 3D or bone-out 2D? Think I made a little bit of pasty on this a little more. I still need to draw these separate, actually, I don't know. Yeah. I can come back and separate those. I still need to get GG at hands, I believe in you. I do be... Bullshitting hands. I did hand studies yesterday while Segoi was drawing hands. I only did three. Only did three little ones. And like, only the first one was really good. The other two were like mid. It was hand day! "Shroomer, that joke sucked!" "I just got back from the store with treats for my cats, they're suddenly so quiet." Oh my gosh! Hello, Galaxy Wolf, welcome in! "Just break them into little shapes they are that add curve bits." True, they are. I did these, these little hand studies. That's all I did yesterday. And then I got bored! Screaming at running horse races, suddenly cozy sleepy. That's really cat behavior. Must have trouble with them joints for some reason. I guess that's because they're like... Not the same as the other four. They're like the one inconsistent one. Hand studies, yeah, I did some hand studies yesterday. I'm gonna have those fingers separate, and then I think I'm gonna make... This one. On its own. I'm gonna change the palm of the hand, to fit this better. Hanging, we're hanging out! These morning streams always make me want tea. We out here, being cozy. Wait, is this Tria? Yeah! We're here at Tria's model. So, it's an earring in the hair curl by Brain Honed In. Tria-esque. Witness. I mean, that's good, though, that tells me that this looks like Tria! Okay, um, let me start naming these. Have to make that line up better. Able to finally get my dust skin, so I can finally get my PC fixed for school stuff and everything else I wanna do. Freedom! "Looking for a reference for my outfit, this was harder than I thought, good luck." It's almost like you're really good at art or something? Imagine. No! Oh, I need to name these right and left, my bad. I completely forgot. There's two arms here, and they're gonna have the same prefix. Okay. Do I wanna do the sleeve for this next? Think, arm R, and then... Arm... L. "Ben has stolen my ointure, so..." Oh my god, hi Sheppy! Hi Sheppy, thank you for the 11 months, Sheppy, thank you, hi! I don't know why you said no sleeves earlier, I imagine you're like ripping my sleeves off, I'm like, "Yes, monther." Takes your sleeves away? No, it's just gonna be me crying and sobbing as I draw all the sleeves layers, because you have 14 pairs of hands now! Tria and her 47 hands. No, it's not that many. It's... How many hands? One, two... Three, four, five, six, seven. Seven? No. Nine. Nine, I think. I think it's nine. Just draw and rig the arms and hands? No. Then have them move and make all the fizz deformers for the sleeves? That's so much work. Shroomer, can you do it for me? No, but I like having this as a point of reference for when I adjust my prices again. I know my worth, $5! I got you, Shroomer! Thank you, Shroomer, thank you. I should have more than two hands, I've been able to do four times the tea. Okay. Uh, Sheppy chugging tea. Just so much tea. Drown yourself with tea? You just have to be skilled. Skilled enough to drink all of the tea instantly. I have not put any like wrinkle lines or anything on these layers, so maybe I will continue to do that. And I'll just... Leave that as-is and go back when I color it. We can make that work. Poor beard dinosaur, is there a way to like relax your throat and pour stuff just right in, like pouring it into a sink? It was wild. That's powerful. Oh my god. And also a little scary. Sheppy, no! Sheppy, the tea, it's too hot, you can't do that! So... There we go. Thank you for the hand stretch. Sheppy's a tea poser, they probably drink Lipton tea, don't bully him, he's British! I must go now, I have things to do, see y'all later, bye, Tria! This morning, I sent Sinny a 10-hour Minecraft relaxing long play, and I was like, "This is how I'm gonna spend the next 10 hours of my life!" Exactly why you bully him! Tuesday in it. "I have a question, do you do Chibi Live 2D models for comms? I know you had one, but I wasn't sure if it's something offered." Yeah, I do! I do! I do! There was, Iris said... That she wanted to do, that they wanted to do collab comms at some point. Um... With possibly Chibi modeler. I need to ask them about it again, because that sounded like cool and like less work for me. But yeah, they would draw and I would rig. I would, I still gotta ask them about it, though, because they are like super busy. It do be Tuesdays, her native dialect, Tuesday in it. What's collab comms? Sometimes an artist and a rig person will team up to do commissions together. So that, you know. Zen! Zen's here, oh my god, hi Zen! I made some in a form for when Alyssa's closed, because I know it's closed soon. They are closed right now. They are closed right now? Hi! Is Tuesday in it? "Bloodstream demands coffee, art partners in crime, correct." "I made a shirt asset last night that you could put your own images or gifs on it, that's kinda funny." "Looked up for the next time they're open, thank yous." Like that one collab you did with Ozu? I think you are confusing me with someone. Collab comms are fun if you find a good person to do it with. Yeah, A and a C. Ain't a bother Iris about it, because I trust Iris with my life. So I wouldn't mind doing that with Iris. The ice cream model. Ice cream, oh, I was, I was like, who is Ozu? That's not, well, I guess that's a collab, it's more like I was just commissioned to rig that. There was no deal made with someone else to make the art, they just did the art themselves. Slightly different, but kind of same idea. I didn't know the bunny's name was Ozu. Thread today on Twitter about people discussing their worst collab experience, oh boy, ooh! That sounds like fighting grounds! The artist's name is Ozu. Oh! Am I going insane? I didn't know they went by Ozu as well, I thought they went by May? I am going insane. Girl looks cool, thank you! I could have Mandela'd myself. Are we talking about the same person? Because the ice cream bunny... Is Spearmint on Twitter, this person. The ice cream bunny that I was working on, I'm actually almost done with that model, I need to add a few more expression things to it and then I'll be free. Spearmint, I love Spearmint's work, yeah, I'm rigging a Live 2D model. For, for the... For her, she/her, I see, okay. What's it called when you don't wanna date but you want someone to come over so you can cuddle while sleeping? Called having a bestie, no! Yeah, I was scrolling through that thread for a bit, it made me go, yeah, I'm just gonna call up with friends from now on, this is wow. I saw the thread, but I didn't actually stop and look through it, I was like scared, I was like, oh, that sounds like fighting! I'm gonna call up my bestie then. My friends used to do this shit all the time, so true. Okay, time to lick, gonna get some work done, some live 2D try and finish mouth forms, good luck with your mouth forms, oh boy. Living in the USA to have a bestie like that. Ozu Wizard, the person who made Spearmint's model that you rigged. Oh, I thought... Spearmint made the model herself because when I asked to make edits to the art, she did it almost immediately. Okay. You get so cuddled though, just keep your socks on! Okay, I need the charms for that one, but I'm gonna do the other arms lines first. I don't wanna bring this up a little bit higher. Grass knitting and I know I don't, I know I am, but I don't wanna do my paperwork even if it'll only take ten minutes, ooh! Sulya, thank you for the raid, welcome in raiders, hi! Hello, let me come uncomfortably close to you so I can sniff you. Cyber great, thank you, thank you for shouting out, welcome in raiders, hi, hello, hi, what were you up to? Oh, you're also doing art, oh shit! Art tax, if you wanna share what you are working on, you can, welcome in raiders, hi, my name is Bree, if you don't know me. Um, working on some Live 2D modeler right now. Struggling, struggling to draw VTuber models. Hi, how's it going today? Oh, it's going good, here, let me zoom out and show you what you're working on here. Um... This is a model for Tria Cosmic Garden, but she has... Her arms missing right now because I'm going in and drawing so many arm parts, but, yeah. Oh, I follow you on Twitter, I love your model and art, thank you! Thank you so much, oh my god. Can I share it? Oh, hell yeah, if you have a link, one of my mods can permit you to post a link. That would be so nice! I love what you're working on, thank you, I love this big witch hat, thank you, thank you. You look so good, thank you! Yeah, I also made this model that I'm using, I'm just out here, being a single parent, no! Being a single VTuber parent, it's all I can do. But yeah, I, Tria has like... I guess... Four sets of arms? Did Twitch shoutout command work or is it just bad? It worked, I saw it. So you single, huh, I'm a single parent because I do both the art and rigging? This is like, thank you so much for letting me share it, it's still a whip, let's take a leak, let's take a little looksee. Take a little looksee, ooh! Oh my god, Miss Mori Caliopi? This is so pretty! Let me, let me share with the class here, hold on. Twitch is breaking for me, oh no, Astro, I'm so sorry. Being a single VTuber parent is super tough, I completely understand you, it be like that sometimes, but I do like doing both art... And rig. It's fun, but it's very time consuming, alright, let's do like this. Here is this lovely art. This lovely art by Sulya, this looks so good, oh my god! This is so pretty! Thank you for sharing! Yes, stare, everyone stare! Hell yeah, of course, oh my god, thank you again for the raid, I'm gonna have to peep your stream, oh my god! Shay, exactly! But yeah, thank you so much for sharing! I'll put this over here. And back in here, okay. This is for Iris, I wanted to ask her advice how to keep myself from not starting a new art and never finishing the previous ones. Uh... What, what I do actually is, I have to, if I don't finish in art in one setting... Like if I'm drawing like a single image, right? If I don't finish it all at once, I usually won't go back to it. Unless it's like paid work, but still. So maybe like, if you set yourself to draw like something small, all at once... It could help build your like, art endurance for one drawing. Those are my words of advice, good luck! Well, thank you for the head pets, thank you. Hi, Ishii! I, uh, anyone coming over from the stream, and Sulya, you as well, if you're tired, don't feel obligated to stay, feel free to go rest if you need to. I'll just be here vibing as per usual. I'm just gonna steal someone's art talents, robbed! I'm Miss Lamura, hello? Hello, hello? Alright, it's time to draw more hand parts, yippee! This is, okay, I keep having this flipped and thinking I'm about to name it the wrong arm. I wanna be able to draw, I hate my hands, why can't they just put thoughts on paper? Why can't project image from brain? If only. Let's name this... Or, like, that? How do I wanna break up the rest of this, though? I love your voice, thank you! Why is clothing details so hard? I don't know, maybe that's why I give all my OCs really simple outfits? So painful that my art looks phantasmal in my brain? And then on paper, it looks like wet concrete? Phantasmal is a very good word, that is a nice word. Imagine if we could project images from brain? If I could project images from brain, I would actually be unstoppable. I would be projecting images constantly, bro! I would be making so much, bro, I would be, there would be so many thoughts in my head, so much thinking. Never heard this song in like so long. Stick figures do be hard though, honestly? Sometimes, sometimes stick figures actually do be hard. You can't visualize anything at all, like, oh my god! You know what's funny? I have heard of glove artists who actually can't draw stick figures, I feel like... Oh my god, it's like... After you reach a certain threshold of training art skill, it's like you can't help but like... Apply the knowledge you know subconsciously to things that you draw, right? So if I'm like, I just wanna draw a stick figure, and then suddenly it's a person! Cannot manifest head apple, cannot manifest the image of the apple in your head. I know exactly what you're talking about. Advanced figure. I can't tell you how hard it is for me to shade anymore, what happened? Oh no. Literally incapable of imagining, but, there is, wait, that's like an actual like condition... That you can have, I forget what it's called, though. A Fantasia, thank you! I want so, because I want so bad in my head for it to be realistic to the point I can't sell shade and be happy with it! You gotta take the steps before... I tried to replicate it myself and it looks like someone threw up on my canvas, nooo! It's one of those paintings with a twist thingies, and I made a painting and it came out okay, ah! Pain and suffering. That do be happening sometimes, though, sometimes you will make a thing and you will never be able to make a thing like that again. Like that's literally just how it go. We're all stick figures inside, if you think about it? Sometimes, I'm stick figure? My next model's gonna be a stick figure. They call that modern art. You may need to drink and draw, I mean, that seems like a relatively safe thing to do, if you want. Only render skin and then I sell shade everything else, that's interesting. I feel like I wouldn't be able to mix the two things, like I'd struggle, I'd be like, why? People with dyslexia in... Other word that I'm not going to try to pronounce, think in 3D, so that's why they got letters and numbers mixed up, oh! They're out, rotating the numbers in my head, no! Rotate the banana! I'm rotating the numbers in my head right now! Nice to meet you, welcome in! Elo? Elo skull? That's probably wrong, but welcome in! I might get a model done of a stick figure for Mimi days, I should do that, we should take... A whole stream and I just make myself a stick figure model! I like you have a cupcake and a follow, thank you! Always told people I don't think when I do art, I be head empty. I think some of the time. Sorry for me to sell shade skin anymore after I found a skin method that worked for me, but I refuse to render clothes because then I would flip a table. I wonder what your hair would be like in that style, it would be like the thing that I drew! It would be, remember? I was like, this is how you draw, this is how you draw me, right? You go circle? Here's a face? Circle, circle, horn, horn, it's like that, that's literally how you draw me! It's like that! Murra, that's me! Would I can draw you? Yeah, it's that easy! Oh my god, I'm missing messages, dear god. Definitely think a stick figure model would be hilarious, crazy stick figure models peak fucking chaos and comedy, oh my god! There we go. I think whenever I sketch, because that's the planning stage, but line art, I'm just bullshitting, that's kinda true for me too, yeah. It's like, sketching is where all the thinking happens and then everything else, I'm just vibes. I do art the way I do rhythm games, consider it for a moment, then wake up four hours later not knowing how I got there. Yeah, just confirm that you pronounced my name correctly if you missed it, oh, thank you, let's go! Let's go, I do be struggling to read names, like constantly. I haven't opened. I'm setting your chat on fire, no, don't set my chat on fire! Don't set my chat on fire, nooo! No, don't set my chat on fire! Not again! Hey Mumu, could I have a thousand points? No. No, you cannot. The plugging this PC into the modern stuff, good luck. Again, it's been a while since my chat has been set on fire. I'm not gonna lie. It's been a hot second. Ha, hot second. Ha, ha. I didn't do that intentionally. Starts crying. The ugly laugh, I just laughed. I can only laugh at jokes when they're really dumb. I'm perfectly limbo. Boo boo. A boo boo. I don't know how I'm gonna do the fishnets on this thumb, but you know what? We'll figure. That's a problem for future me. That's a problem for future me. Um... I don't care. Got that picnic basket? Murra, do you know a song called Lime and the Coconut? I don't know the actual song. I just hear it in my head. You put lime in the coconut. So we call you Murra? You can call me Murra, yeah. You can call me Murra. You can call me Bree. I think most people call me Murra. You put the lime in the coconut. I feel like I made this thumb not wide enough. Go this way. Just a little. I call her the kicked up god. I'm gonna start crying. No. Cassie bullied me for not knowing. Hats you so gently. Cassie, do not bully Suguri for not knowing these things. Wait. Oh, I put two layers in here on accident, my bad. What? Why did it do that? Okay. I didn't bully for not knowing. Give me the strength to draw this last. After this hand, there's one more hand, I think. Should be one more hand. And then there's no more hands to draw. It's just filling and coloring and stuff. I want nachos. I'm manifesting nachos with my mind right now. Doing it. They're appearing. Here they come. I bullied cuz they were so adamant about it not being a thing. It's not real. I don't even know what that's from. Where are you from if you don't mind me ca- uh, mind telling? U.S. of A. I am a U.S.-based artist. I didn't know it was a song. I also didn't know it was a song. The only reason I know that phrase is because like my cousins would say it. When I was younger and I was like, those are words. My cousin and my brother. U.S. of A, which means like this. What is that? Who is that? Now I made this finger like too big. Liquify tool. Liquify tool saved me. I still don't know how I wanna split this up. Maybe like one and then like the rest? No. I don't know. Marika. I'm just over here. Suffering. No. Okay. What if I only drew two of the fingers? No, I shouldn't. I always feel like when I just have to draw like overlapping fingers like this, I'm like doing something horribly, horribly wrong. Any knowledge I know of hands is out the window. It's gone. Cheeked up demon. That is a really good emote. I'm not gonna lie. Hands who needs them? Me unfortunately. This is not the correct order. This is not the correct order for these hands at all. Um... This... Hey, ooh, maybe this go here? I'm gonna leave it like that for now. Okay, sleeve. Need the front of the sleeve. Hi Gemini, welcome in. Slee- oh, how do I name this? This? And then... I'm not putting underscores. Sleeve. Right. That's the most incomprehensible sentence you've ever sent me. I hate it. Y'all ever hit the back of your ankle on your chair and go through the five stages of grief? Yeah. I've done that to the leg of this desk several times. Just remind, commit scooter ankle. You're drawing a baby today? Yeah. Working on Tria. I'm going through it. Astro, please, you have to live. Astro! Astro, you cannot die here. Fight the chair. Yeah, you have to fight the chair instead. I kicked my coffee table a few nights ago with my pinky toe and my soul left my body for a solid five minutes. Yeah, sounds about right. I see why Akilius just fucking died. Suddenly I understand. Oh wait, I need that sleeve. Otherwise, that's not gonna line up. Hold on. I need the sleeves again. Where are those? This. Okay. Let's make this lineup better. Oh, bongo time? Bongo time? Put the bongos. I need to go pay for a bongo emote. Oh yeah. Okay, so there's the front of the sleeve and then the back of the sleeve and then the charm. The charms. That's not where this goes. Oh, wait, that line was fine actually. Copy this. Okay, so those... Look like they line up, okay? I need to get the charms again, but I don't have any of the layers with the charms open. Hold on. Should I just take it from here? I guess that'd be easier. Since these don't have the colors on them. There we go. Oh wait, I'd have to split this into right and left though. I did not think about that. If I... I guess I can literally just move this normally. What am I on about? So one here? And then... This one? Up here, I guess technically. We'll just put it behind the hand and sleeve. It'll be fine. Alright, let's cut this. And there's two of them. Okay. This one in here? And then this one in here? I have to rename it. Oops. Not the double underscore, my bad. Okay. There's those ones. One more, I think. Where's the sketch again? We're saving. Sure? Oh, it is here. It's just 25% opacity. Okay, so now... This one. This one with the little baby. And then I think that's it for the arms. This one looks like it uses these ones? Yeah. The only thing about this one is I don't know how I wanna break this little guy up. Hmm. Well, we're about to find out. Let's do the arm first at least. Uh, I need... The sleeve's gone again. And I need the correct sleeves. Nope. Um... Where is the folder? Cuz that's this. Unless it's in here, wait. Oh. Yes, okay. This. And then no upper sleeves. There we go. I guess I should hide this too, wait. It is starting to get hard to see through all the lines. Just a little. Just a little. Not enough for me to want to turn off the other line layers. Hello, running, welcome in. Maybe I should bring this down. Hold on. Just like a little. Mostly worried about that lighting. Segoy is having a meltdown about a thumb. Again? Whoa, he's gotten like so much done though. Oh shit. The meltdown is over. He survived. Segoy yelling is always a good time. I think there's a cat crying again. Hey? I was so confused. I thought he was on some Reddit joke. Every stage. Oh my god. Oh my god. In a matter of 45 minutes. That's so powerful. Oh, that was right, Slinky. Slinky was at my door. You know, from sad to mad to sad to acceptance to happy to meltdown to happy to sad to get to happy. It was scary to watch. What doing art does to a person. You have to be careful. You have to be careful when you wanna be an artist. You know, I guess I can put... These away. Oh, he was gonna delete everything? Dear god. What a power move that would be. Oh! My! Thank you for the raid! Hi! Welcome in raiders! Hellooo! Shniff, 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 shniff. I'm sniffing. Welcome in raiders! How was your stream? What were you doing? Minecraft? I won't play Minecraft. I hope you had a good Minecraft stream. Thank you for the kissy. Here I go. Yeah. Welcome on in, y'all. We are working on Tria again. I'm drawing the rest of Tria's arms. And I'll probably fill the rest of those arms, too. We're getting there. I'm getting tired, it's only been 2.5 hours, though. Sobbing and crying and crying and sobbing, I can't stop, nah. Minecraft was fun, hell yeah. I keep thinking about hopping back on some Minecraft. I just wanna build. I just wanna be a solid little builder. It's coffee! I'm hungry, still waiting for another 15 minutes for my pasta frozen dinner to be done? Oh my gosh. Well, I hope you can enjoy your dinner soon! Mura, hi, hi! Hello, wild, welcome in! I want pasta. But I don't wanna make any. That's me! Just saw you in my recommendations. Ayo! Nice! Sometimes Twitch be recommending... Slinky! How did you get up there? Hold on, my cat! Okay, I'm back. He was standing on part of the window that he should not have been standing on. I was so confused. Ready to go fight dishes, good luck, sugary! I forget how I got here. Twitch be recommending only the cool ones, you? Oh my god. Shy fingers? Sometimes Twitch be putting me in people's recommended, and that's kinda wild. I have to draw these fingers. I don't wanna... I don't wanna draw the fingers! I shouldn't have done all these hands at once, I'm getting tired of drawing the fingers. Thank you for the lurk, sugary. I got into you through Keishen. That makes sense. Keishen, our beloved. Beloved wolf boy. I'm collecting all of the VTuber animals. Um... I have a rabbit, and, and a fox, and a dragon, and a wolf, and... I have to stop. I'm just collecting them all. Wolf's goat. However you say that... I believe you. I should start naming these. Bjork? Oh. What, what layer is this? Where did the layer for the arm go? Okay. Come on, this is the last hand I have to line, please. Please, brain, just for a little longer. What's wrong, Slinky? Why are you meowing so sad? Like, oh, you look so dramatic in that light, bro. Dude! I kinda love the look. Mr. Slinky! Mr. Slinky, you're kinda making... You're kinda looking fancy right now. Hi, uh... Sorry, I had to stop and take pictures of my cat. He looks so dramatique. Here, lemme. Oh, I didn't mean to do that. Oh, ba, 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 ba. Okay. Here he is. I just thought this ray of light on him looked kinda weird. He looks so dramatic. He looks so angry. What is he thinking about? Slinky! What are you thinking about? Look at this perfect curl. Oh my god. Angiebebe. I think he's literally just squinting like that because of the light, but still... Hi! I don't know why he wants to sit there. He's chilling. Do you think he's plotting against me? Probably. He's plotting my downfall. And he'll be like, "No, Slinky, you can't plot my downfall, I'm the one that gives you food, what are you talking about?" And he'll be like, "Oh yeah, that's right." Oh, I just moved a whole layer. No. Did not mean to. I wonder how bad of an idea it would be to freestyle the rest of this hand?
Yes. How can I help you, baby boy? Why are you meowing like that?
He's being so baby. Maybe just lower the opacity more? You never know. Could be. I had a frie- my friends' cat do the same until they pounce on me. Oh no! If you downfall, they could eat your face. But like, that is one meal. If I am still alive, I will go out and get many cat meals. I will get many meals for the cat. Hello, zini, welcome in! I have to stop being sleepy, please, it has to even been 3 hours. I might stop at 3 hours. I woke up too early today. And that was my first mistake. That was my first bad choice of the day. Mura, ain't no way. Oh, what the ba? Segoy played contexto and the word was hand? Oh! Ooh! The timing, it was meant to be! Holy shit! Oh my god. Oh, but that's usually a good thing? Waking up at 6am? I didn't, well, I did mean to, but like, I meant to fall back asleep after. And I just didn't. I wanted to fall asleep again. Have you heard of P-A-I-D-A? You might like her music. I have not heard of. Need to wake up at 4:30am to go to work? Yeah! I had to wake up this early so I could take my medicine out of the refrigerator. And have it be room temperature by the time I needed it. So I was gonna get up, take it out, and then go back to bed. And then, I did not go back to bed. Aida. Aida. I'll put that there. And another one. We are freestyling. We are freestyling, this is what a hand looks like, surely. If I just believe hard enough... This will be a hand. You could tell I'm tired, cause I'm like, doing the manic, talking to myself thing. But like, it's getting worse. Worse than I usually am. I will draw this hand. I will draw this hand, and I will become so powerful. If I finish drawing this hand, I will become so powerful, I become so powerful. I will become truly unstoppable, if I can draw this hand. Please? Ooh, if I can draw this last finger, ooh. Okay, I am going to change the shape of the palm, which is like, all the way up here somewhere? Oh, I just put like, 3 layers in here, whoops. There we go. Hello, I finally am able to make a stream, I've been lurking on the social, I have had opportunity to say hello. Hello, welcome in! Welcome in, welcome in. Today, we are just doing a little bit of model work. This is like... Curious model is probably what I'll be working on, on stream, for the next couple of streams. Alright, now all these are separated, and completely in the wrong order, but you know what? That's fine. Like, this is supposed to be like, all the way down here. Give me this, give me this. Give me the... Okay. Let's draw the sleeve as well. Do I have? Oh, I do have. I do have that layer on, okay, cool. I'm gonna have to do something other than line art after this. I'm losing it, and quickly, quickly losing it. I got this astro, I am so powerful. Listen, I am literally so powerful. I was going through all the sketch brushes I have last night, and I found a nice one, and I found a really nice shade of pink that shows up on this gray background I usually use. And I wanna start using it all the time. I wanna use it all the time. Sketching in pink is giving me good brain feels. Sleeve back. I should've asked you this last night, but like, I need help with e-boy fashion? Oh, okay. I got you, hands you a Pinterest board. Who is the e-boy? I have one of my fashion boards, it's like, pretty e-boy aligned, lemme find it. Final fantasy, oh... Oh, understandable. Let's see. I'd say a lot of this board is. Some of it's a bit fancier, but a lot of this is. What's the difference between e-boy fashion and Howard Jukumenswear? I'd say the color scheme. I would go out on a limb and say the color scheme. Yeah. And more textures too, yeah. Thank you for pinboard, of course. Little baby wisp, do I want to draw you right now? I probably should. But if I made a circle first? That might be easier. Let's see, it was stripes, black, white, red, occasionally purple. See, what I, all my, literally like the whole board I have for like e-boy stuff is like black, white, sometimes black and white stripes, grunge, chains. That's it. You just described my dream fit. Congratulations, you're an e-boy now. Oh yeah, the chains too. Paula, welcome in. Ishii is an e-boy now. Congrats! I guess this should be behind everything. Let's make a folder for wisp. Need to learn how to be comfortable in chains again? Back in the day, when I was in college. Twenty-seven million years ago. Um, I used to wear chains, but not very often. It's more like, I would forget to put them on. Like, it's a step in the process of getting ready that I would easily forget about. My e-boy transformation is starting. Congratulations. Wisp is a circle. Let's make a circle. That is kind of a thin line. We're making a circle first. I meant to move object. Move object. Thank you. I'm not moving the thing I want to move. That's okay. We take this circle and we make it to less of a circle because it's not a perfect circle. Hip chains, but wrist waist. Neck harness. I'm not used to feeling so heavy. Ah. That would get heavy, huh? The layers, the layers. Let me come late. Pull this back out. There we go. Wisp shape to start with. I think that worked pretty okay. Alright, are we gonna separate like this little hair? I'm thinking? You take the moon, and 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 you take the moon. Oh, I'm being mean. People being mean to me. There are things that make me very mean, very not nice. And then the little, like, these things? I feel like the most I'd do to this is put physics on it, so we're just gonna make it all one shape. Drawing feels so good, doesn't it? Sometimes. Sometimes drawing be like fighting for my life. I don't remember how I got to your stream, but I snooped around a little bit because I love your earned model. Thank you! Welcome in. Okay. Those have little stars on the end of them, which I'm gonna get at the star brush. I'm gonna get at the star brush. You're not gonna make me draw the stars. No, no, no. That's right, it's time for the star brush. You thought I was gonna draw the stars? Why would I do that? Actually, that's too big. Why don't I draw the stars so I can get at the little star brush? There we go. Maybe I'll go like this way. But they may get a different angle. There we go. The secret, always fighting for my life when drawing. That's truly the artist's way. Boop, hello? Look for the thrill of the battle. Where's my circle? Okay, here. I'm gonna put these little things. That is not the line color. I'll put these little things separate. These little fuzzy things. Think this will make sense if I do it like this. Put this behind here. And then this up here. Oops. Maybe like that. I'm just doing basic core colors and I'm dying. I believe in you. You got this. Uh. Actually, I'm gonna make this like a little bit. There we go. Does this one go? This goes behind. And put it down here. Playing back with food and fries. Welcome back. I don't want food and fries. I could make some fries today. I could literally do that. Maybe we'll do that. Tokyo Drift. Moto, thank you for the subscription. Thank you. Thank you for the sub. I appreciate it. Let me roll my neck around really quick because your girl's been looking down for too long. This is why I need that stand so that I stop angling my head down. Need to find a stand I can use. Yippee! Just upwards above your head so you can lie down in bed. But then I'd have to lift my arm. That creates a new problem. Wait. Then you have to lift your arm to reach the tablet. Like upwards. Hi, nobody! I'm doing okay. I'm almost done adding these other arms. I guess hmm, what would be the best way to do this? I need I don't know what amount of detail I should put into this face. Because I don't know if Traya wants this little guy to emote or not. Maybe I'll just leave it with no face for now. For now. Let us save again. Let me fill in some of these layers. Thank you. Is it a spooter lady? Nah, she just has a bunch of arm toggles and I have them all on at once. Oh wait, let me turn off this sketch layer because I might be selecting the wrong colors. These are all hand layers. Oh, that was the thumb. Okay, let me get the charm again. Let's grab it from here. Yeah, that's a lot of arms. Uh. Let me get from this. Okay. Give me one of these. Hmm, let's put those here. Okay. That's there. It's all filled. Except for the little guy, but and that's, okay. Let me put all my layers back. Okay. There's those ones. And then these ones. And then these ones. Okay, I didn't fill these ones. Oh, that's the charm, isn't it? Here we go. And then here. Oh, this is like all of these, isn't it? No, it's this one, my bad! My bad, also there's a gap in this liner for some reason, it selected outside. There's not an actual gap, it just did what it wanted, I guess. Okay, now this, yeah. There's that. Except for the charm, which, let me go back here. There's that one. And now this one. Thank you for the hydrate and stuff, thank you. This is again the charms first. That's the star, and then this should be, okay. No! These are unnamed layers, what are you? Okay. Okay, this should be up here. There we go. Okay. So now it's... Those all filled. Those are all filled, wait, no they're not. Oh, I did do the charm, never mind! Okay. And this except for the wisp, baby. And... These, which should be good. For now. I didn't fill these, hold on. Okay, I think that's all armed things except for the little wisp baby, but that can come later. Three hours to line and flat, I don't remember which ones I did. We did the game ones and the thinking ones? Yeah, we did. Five more arms. It's a lot of arms. I like how it's just starting to look like this star charm is just kinda everywhere. One of these isn't filled, is it this one? Yeah. There we go. Me with my 47 arms. Me and the bestie and my 37 arms. Um, okay. I like how Wormtree is just here to stay. Wormtree lives in this canvas now. The PC is officially working, nice! Let's gooo! Where shall we go? I'm glad it's functioning, yeah, thank you for the stretch! Ugh! My bones! Oh, it's over for me. I'm passing away right now. We could go say hi to Tria, actually, Tria's live. We could go raid Tria right now. We could literally do that. It took a good hours to get it working correctly, but now I can fix everything to how I need it, very nice. Ripmira, I'm so crunchy right now, you have no idea. Anyway, if you like this model that I am working on, we are literally going to go raid the person this model belongs to. We're gonna go say hi to Tria. But yeah. Arms! Thank you for the care package, let me go over here. Hi! Hi! Hello! Hi! I probably gonna go back, I'm gonna get food and then go back to sleep after this, I think. Yes! Do this, hi, hello, hey, hi, 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 wait, what's right, hi, hi, hello, 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 hello? Thanks for hanging out, um... Outro stuff, follow me on Twitter. I make art and post art there, and post when I go live there. We're gonna go raid Tria, who's the person who owns the model I was working on. She gave me such good money to work on that model. So we're gonna go say hi. Um, I'm supposed to start streaming three days a week, I did last week because of Blaze's debut, but I'm thinking I'm either gonna try a Thursday or a Friday, we'll see. I don't know. The Thursday or Friday is what I'm going for. So I'll see ya when I see ya, I guess. I'll see ya when I see ya. Copy that raid message if you would like, thank you for hanging out with me, thank you, thank you, thank you, be nice to Tria, Tria's super nice. Okay, bye!